Let me turn your mic on.
I don't know if it was a guy or a girl.
So you know my brother?
He has a long digital one up.
Started coming around a while back. Follows Riverbys real estate. Badness to do that.
He's an interesting guy. He's had his problems, but. Yeah, but you know. Nothing wrong with that. You know, but.
The apps to go stay up for. And give those working for the boards.
I got a couple extras, just in case.
Travels quite a bit. She asked me not to embarrass. She asked me not to embarrass. Anybody get up on top or you pushing, you know, anybody doing a body surfer there?
I have. To me.
All right, I got seven. You guys all ready? Everybody ready?
Let's go. Let's do this.
Like to open the Oglesby City Council meeting tonight? Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Here.
Udis.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Stefani.
Here.
Kern.
Here. Please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Number four, public comment on agenda items only. Seeing that there are none. Number five, approved minutes from the March fourth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting and executive session. If there are no corrections or additions, if I can get a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number six, approved bills as presented for payment in the amount of four hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents. If there's no additions or corrections or modifications, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number seven, approve March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four payroll in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy cents. If there's no additions or corrections, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number eight, Oglesby, Washington Boys Basketball Team. Baldridge.
Yeah, once again, we'd like to congratulate the Oglesby Boys Basketball Team on their fine season. If JP Rose, the Parks Director, would like to get up and give you guys something.
JP?
Is it on now?
Nope.
Yeah, you should be on. Just push it towards you.
Yep, that's good. Gentlemen, I just want to congratulate you guys on a great season. The city councils decided to give you guys gifts here. We got you guys a lap here, seventh grade, boys' IESA State Basketball Class Two Eight runner-up, Oglesby, Washington, bowl level, with a record of twenty-two and one. And then for, that's for a trophy case wherever you guys please, and then a basketball for you guys all to sign and also put in the trophy case for you guys. So at this time, I'm going to announce the the rosters. So who's ever here, I don't know if you guys are all here or not, but you guys can all stand up here and then we'll take a little picture. Adrian Hermosillo, Eli Hammers, Kalen Franzen, Deku Yusini, Spelius Buffo, Lane Basset, Brady Blumquist, Gavin Stokes, Grayson Konzak, Keaton Campbell, Randy Simone, Ian Mauer, Johnny Kamnikar, and the coaches Tyler DeBrock, Trent Stokes, and Gary Giggie.
Good job, guys.
Yeah.
Congratulations on a great season.
Speaking on behalf of everybody here, I'd just like to say thank you. This is a real honor to get this kind of award. I also want to thank the council for all the support you gave us during the tournament. I mean, we had two parades. We had our name on the marquee for a week. We had a great send off with a police escort on our town on the way to the championship game. And lost my train of thought. But anyhow, thank you very much. It's been an honor to receive this. We'll keep, we'll promise you we'll display this in a prominent place in school. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Nice job, boys. You guys did great. Proud of you.
Do you have anything else you want to say about?
Most considering.
All right.
All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations again, guys.
Congrats, guys.
Fantastic. Always some good positive stuff. All right. Number nine, approved twenty twenty-four Tag Day requests. I believe we only had four of them in this year. Any questions, concerns over them? Can you get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four Tag Day request.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number ten, swear in new Oglesby Police Officer Spencer Shaw.
Spencer, want to come forward? Raise your right hand, please. Going to repeat after me. I state your name. Spencer Shaw. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. Constitution of the State of Illinois. Enforce the state laws and the city ordinances impartially. Enforce the state laws and city ordinances impartially. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Patrolman to the best of my ability. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Patrolman to the best of my ability. Okay, congratulations. We're going to have his girlfriend Amber come up and pin his badge on him now. Come on up, Amber. Congratulations.
All right. Number eleven, e-bike rental lease agreement. Baldridge.
Yeah, we talked about this last year. I think we finally got the lease agreement figured out here. And I think it'll be a great addition to our downtown, and I would like to discuss it or whatever anyone would like to do, or we could go ahead and.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great thing anytime we got an opportunity for more economic development and more people wanting to do activities in town. Any other questions, concerns? If not.
You need a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve e-bike rental lease agreement.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Good job.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number twelve, IMEA Power Sales Contract Extension through twenty fifty-five. Baldridge.
Yeah, we discussed this last time and placed it on file. It extends the contract out to twenty fifty-five. We've had nothing but good fortunes with the IMEA and their power costs, and I suggest that we go ahead and extend this contract with them.
I think it's, obviously, the IMEA is a great benefit to the city that we're a member, actually. I know Pat and I, you and I talked about this recently. Was there something more you look to do with the sales contract or something?
No, I looked at the contract. I attended a seminar that the IMEA had earlier on in the year about it, and they went through it in depth for about two or three hours. They tweaked a couple of small things that came out of some comments from there. So if the council approves it, I will go ahead and draft the ordinance to approve that contract extension for signature, and we could have that ready at the next meeting if you want to do that.
Okay, so what we're looking to do is to
authorize.
authorize you to make, put it in ordinance format.
Correct.
Is what you're looking at. Okay. I didn't know if, I know when I talked to Kevin, the CEO, I know a while ago, he said he was thinking about the IMEA coming out to the different municipalities and talking about it a little bit. I don't, I don't think we necessarily need that as far as the city to approve it. I do think there's a lot of value, though, in people understanding what it means to be a member of the IMEA because we're very fortunate to be in that. So I don't know if that's still on the plans anybody wants to do. I know sometimes people think that these meetings can be kind of dry, but I think it is important information. What do we think? Do you want to do that or?
Do you want to approve this, Rich? I would like to approve it, yes.
Okay.
You make the motion, I'll second. I'd like to make a motion to approve the IMEA Power Sales Contract Extension through twenty fifty-five. Second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number thirteen, letter of support for the IMEA Solar Farm. So what this is, we've been talking about the solar farm for quite some time now. We, matter of fact, before this, about forty-five minutes before our meeting tonight, we had an open hearing if there was any residents that had some concerns. There was one lady that had some questions before the meeting started, and then the gentleman had questions during the meeting. I don't know, does anybody else have any other questions concerned about it? So this letter, what it really does is doesn't really set anything in motion too much yet except sending to the IMEA that we're interested in pursuing this project because they're very close to having a new contractor move forward with the project.
Yeah, they have contracts and they're ready to go. So they want to know that you're committed to moving forward with this project before Kevin signs all those contracts. He signed them for Princeton and one other town.
We need to.
Ah, okay. Any questions, concerns?
My only concern is that we add to it that it is contingent upon the Boosie Unison Agreement. I think that's reasonable.
Definitely.
And Rick says that she sent that up the flagpole on March thirteen, thirteen.
Okay.
Hopefully that'll be back this week. You understand what we're talking about there, Mike?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Make a motion to agree to the letter of support for the IMEA Solar Farm.
With the.
With the contingency that Boosie agrees.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number fourteen, approved purchase of BHMG bid package number five for twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighteen cents for Malik Substation. Baldridge.
The city did not receive any bids for the specification K zero zero four for substation equipment. The success of soliciting bids in the current conditions has proven difficult. Since the project still requires these items, BHMG contacted two of the existing electrical parts distributors for quotes for the items. We got two of them. One was for thirty-one thousand, seventy dollars, the other one for twenty-four, nine eighty-nine. I would look for us to go ahead and agree to approve the bid package, part of bid package five for twenty-four thousand, nine eighty-nine and eighteen cents.
Is this for the, like, the remaining components for, like, the transformer coming in? Is it for the?
It's for package number five, the twelve point four seven KV breaker.
Okay. Any questions, concerns?
No, but I have something to offer. I know that Commissioner Baldridge and I have been monitoring these costs because some of this stuff has been tending to go up and up and up and up, and I know that the second feed and the Malik Substation is all stuff that's important, but I just want people to understand that these costs, we're monitoring them because there comes a point where you have to say, okay, can I still afford to do this? So I'm all for, I'm all for it. I'm just saying that, you know, we have to be, we have to be mindful of what it's costing because all these other pet projects that we want to do around here, there's, the pot's only so big, so.
That's a fair assessment. You know, when we, we looked at this, starting this process years ago, we were estimated in the project to be about a million, million and a half. And obviously, we started having these talks even before COVID hit and things have just gotten out of control. So the, the cost has gone up significantly. There are two things to think about, though. So the first thing is the upgrade to Malik Road Substation with the transformer, that aspect has to happen because we cannot bring another GTI in, right? We have, we have some room for growth out there, but if another GTI-type facility wanted to come in, something of that size, we would not be able to facilitate it. So we do need the growth either way. The second feed, that is to bring more redundancy, more reliability to the system. That is something that we could question, that aspect of it. I do think it'd probably be a good idea at some point to maybe, maybe get a new listing of all the prices of everything, of what we think that's going to be so we can really evaluate that. But there is an element to the, to the progress, to the project that has to happen anyways. So any questions, concerns over that?
It's my two cents.
All right. We get a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the BHMG bid package number five, twenty-four thousand, nine eighty-nine, eighteen cents for Malik Substation.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number fifteen, certificate of authority by vote to enter into agreements with State of Illinois Road Salt Purchases. McDermott.
Okay, guys, what this is, it's a state statute now, and we got to have a contract, and the mayor needs to sign it. You can't use motor fuel tax. That's basically it, is to buy the salt, something that the city needs.
Can I, can I, did that change? Because before I was able to just assign that as the commissioner because it was, it was a state statute. Yeah, because, because I asked that. The first time I saw a bill like that, it was like thirty-five, forty thousand. I was like, can I, how do I sign this? And they said, well, because it's a state statute, you have to have eighty percent of the salt from the, the previous year that you used on hand by June thirtieth. So it's not a thing about, should we do it? Do we want to do it? We have to do it. And the other aspect of it is the cost is already regulated by the state because you get the salt through a state program. So I was always told that I never had to put it up for a thing unless you're going to use motorfield tax or do something crazy like that. But
It's my understanding you can't no longer use motorfield tax. And now it's, this year it's a state statute, and they got to put it under contract, and they ask that the mayor signs it.
Okay. Any questions, concerns?
Okay.
I get a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to certificate of author, authority by vote to enter into agreement with the State of Illinois Road Salt Purchase.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number sixteen, ordinance number one, two, four, five, dash, zero, three, one, eight, two, four, which establishes a date for public hearing on amendments to TIF six. There's just a timeline of things that we got to do to get this TIF six amendment going, and that's just the next phase of it, essentially. Anything else? Pat, I should probably note about it or anything.
May sixth at six PM is what's being suggested.
Any questions, concerns on that?
Nope.
So may sixth.
Can I get a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefani.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number seventeen, old business. So I'll be honest, there is about eight items here, four under, under old business and four under new business. They're really truly all old business items, but the new business items, I can't confirm if they've ever been talked about at a, at a council meeting in the past. So that's why they're separated the way they are. I probably could put a whole bunch of items on here, but I know the council did not want to do working meetings anymore, so there's some things that we need to talk about because if we don't do them, there is some problems that have been coming up with it. The first one is discuss bucket truck auction date deadline. I know the bucket truck thing's been an area of contention for a little bit. The, the person that had one of the bids that we were going to award it to has had some concerns. I believe that we legally rejected the bids, and then about six months ago, we decided to send it out to public auction. However, that has not happened yet. So that's kind of my thoughts on it. The council voted to send it to auction. It hasn't happened, and now I have concerns about residents coming to me about issues with that. So I guess my question is, when are we going to get this to public auction? Are we doing something different with it?
It was actually talked and discussed and rescinded and rejected on November twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting. On March sixth, our electric department reached out to a auctioneering company. It says, I'm reaching out to share about, some information about your two thousand Altec AT thirty-seven G. Fetch this email. You will find an Excel file with comps for similar units sold within the last six months. Additionally, the auction estimate for your unit is as follows. Auction estimate, two thousand AT thirty-seven G mounted on Ford F five fifty, nine thousand to twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Please keep in mind that the estimate is based upon the assumption that the unit is in good working condition, and there are no major issues with the chassis or aerial that needs to be discussed. A follow-up shortly to discuss the auction estimate and process in detail. However, if you have any immediate questions regarding the comps or our auction estimate, please feel free to contact me. I'm at the mercy of the auction company.
Okay. So it looks like we reached out till March sixth. All right. Are we, do we think by the next meeting, we'll have a, a date set that we can report that there's a date for the public auction?
I, I've never auctioned anything in my life. I have no idea.
Okay. Well, we'll follow up, I guess, with that one then. Any other questions, concerns on that?
Aye.
Well, keep, sir, I will say, if you want to have a conversation, you could have talked about that at the agenda items only, but now if you want to talk about it, it has to wait until the public comments section. Okay. All right. Next item, discuss economic development signage and updating map at canoe landing. I know this has been an area of contention for probably about a year and a half. At one point in time, there was, I think the previous clerk had a, went out for like an estimate or something like that. There was talks about working with, we are Oglesby to get these signs and maps updated down there. If you haven't been down to the canoe landing in the summertime, it is packed. It is absolutely packed. There's a lot of people down there. The map that we have down there currently is actually wrong. I don't know when that map went up. It must have went up prior to twenty nineteen. So we've talked about it. I just, I want to make sure that we're doing that. I've asked a lot of questions on it, and I, for the last ten months, I got working on, working on it. So this, this directly relates to economic development. So I'd like to see if there's a timeline that we can get this done. Otherwise, I'd like to get started on it tomorrow.
Do you have a sign you want to present or something?
I have a draft of what the previous clerk did. That's where I would start at it. I know that it's been with a specific commissioner for a while, but we haven't got any action on it. I just don't want to have another season go by.
Do we have any drafts when we are Oglesby was working on this or?
We are Oglesby never put together a draft on it. They were talking about it.
There's a history behind it, Mac. Yeah, I think, I think we are, we are Oglesby kind of championed the idea, and then it was kind of taken over by the city, and it caused some contention, and it is something that's important. I think the, the previous council agreed that it was a very good idea to have signage down there so they could know that our local establishments and what we have to offer, because it's so far removed, they don't get to the downtown district. So that's basically what I recall.
That's, I'd say that's a pretty good summary. They, they're the ones that had the initial idea, and then when we started looking at it, I went down there, looked at the sign, I'm like, oh, my God, the sign that's down here is even incorrect, which I thought made it a higher priority. We started looking at it. You know, there was a committee forum for that, for the, for we are Oglesby, and we were working with the, the city with that, and then at one point in time, the clerk went out for some quotes, and then everything kind of, everybody got a little upset about some stuff. So as far as I know, the only designs I've seen was something that came back with some quotes for it. I'd like to start back at that point and see if we can get this project moving.
I've started. We are working on it.
Okay. Do you know when we can get a next update on it?
I don't. I could give an update next meeting. I know it's that important. There are a number of other things that I've been working on as well, so.
Well, I'm happy to assist with any of that. Okay, so hopefully next meeting, we can get some movement on that. Next item, discuss small Seneca Square stage for city events and potential community use for increased economic activity. So we didn't necessarily approve anything as a council, but at one of our last working meetings, and they worked quite a while ago, one of the things we talked about was, at least, I think as a council, we agreed to look into the small stage item. If you remember what the full-size plan for Seneca Square was, there was this large band shell stage, but everything that we've done with Seneca Square is kind of on a smaller scale for what we actually came up with. We did find out that, so the two events that we have there every year, it costs us fifteen hundred dollars just to rent the stage. That's not including the bands or anything like that. So, so that's three thousand dollars a year that we put towards just for stage rental. I really think by having a small stage of some format there, whether it's, you know, ten to fifteen thousand or whatever the cost is, the, the events will pay for itself in a short period of time. But the other big thing is by having something like there, I'd like to get to the point to where we have other community events that's not run by just the city alone. I'd like to find ways to make more events happening there because, again, the whole idea behind Seneca Square really was, and it still is good, the idea that we're bringing more opportunity for gathering spots and events to happen in the downtown district to expand out our opportunities. So I, I know I've talked with Commissioner Baldridge, and, and he is against the idea of, of putting a stage there, and I wanted to talk about that because I think as a council, we wanted to look at developing something there possibly. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I have a thought. Could you tell me what working meeting you had that discussion where we approved or even looking into proving?
We didn't, we didn't approve one. We did not approve anything.
I think that the one that I saw that we did talk about, it was June twenty-eighth, and we didn't do anything on it. I think we pushed it off, and I couldn't find anything thereafter. I did take the liberty to talk to our Parks Board, as always recommended here, and they, they were against the idea. I have it here somewhere. All right, yeah. They said the topic of Seneca Square was brought up. All members in attendance were not positive how it looks and thought it was a complete waste of money. Rose said he felt slighted when the project was taking place because he was left out of talks and was told to maintain it. Board members also felt left out of such a big project in the city. Walters mentioned he heard that a stage could possibly be added to Seneca Square, and he was fully against wasting more money into the park. Rose said it is already there, tight there, due to the large fountain being in the center, and a stage would only further contest the area. Also today, ironically, Glenn Gerard, our friend, posted on the Oglesby Days thing, many well-known musicians appeared on this Lehigh stage many years ago, sitting there for years now, unused and unappreciated. Has forty-nine comments and a hundred and thirty-five likes. Yeah, it is my position to not put a stage in that park.
Okay.
I would like to see us repair that stage that's at Lehigh because it's a liability for the city. I mean, it's a beautiful stage, but it's got a big hole in it, and we just, we need to get it fixed. Speak to that whenever we're ready. I think he did fix it. It wasn't fixed? I believe so.
I don't know if it was.
There, there, last time I was out there, there was a hole in the middle of the stage. Someone had lit a fire or something on there. So I believe Mr. Lance had bought a two-by-six and put it on there. Yeah, so my position on this, because again, for my role, I'm going to take it right back to the money factor. I said in previous meeting that we would be going for this grant, this Oslod Grant, where we can do some things down at Lehigh, and I was at the Park Board meeting and explained all that to them, just what my thoughts were, what our thoughts were, and they were, they were in favor of it. So I think if we're talking about spending money, let's spend the money over there because, again, we just talked about all these electrical upgrades and all these things that we have to start throwing money towards, and if this is a fifty-fifty grant, guess what? We got to come up with fifty percent of it. So I, I'm just of the opinion myself personally, as a commissioner up here, that I would rather see that money go towards Lehigh Park than have it go over there for a stage. We already have a stage built, and we can do nothing but improve on it over there. And I think that's an area, I mean, we have our Summer Fun Fest over there. It, that, that is a prime area, and we can, we can definitely better it. So that's my position. I'm not looking to argue or debate it. That's just where I'm at with it.
Well, I think it's good that we're bringing it up then so we can talk about this because there might be some fundamental differences of opinion, and whatever the council thinks this direction is, we need, that's the direction we need to go. So my understanding is that stage was used for, for concerts back when we had Oglesby Days, a long time ago. Now that we have our Fun Fest, our Fun Fest has shifted more to the other side, where we have it, you know, the stages are at the Elks, and from my understanding, that's the plan that we're going to continue because it's been very successful there. My understanding of, I didn't think that we were planning to bring back any kind of concerts at Lehigh because the whole purpose of that is to, because even though it's a nice memory to have and stuff like that, bringing it to Seneca Square is what my understanding, the plan commission came up with the idea to, to push for Seneca Square in the first place because we're trying to bring the economic activity to the center. because we're trying to bring the economic activity to the center of the city, not the edge. But if that's a difference of opinion, we probably need to figure that out.
Or if it's just, that's what the majority of the body wants, then that's what the majority of the body wants. And there's no sense in fighting about it. It is what it is. I mean.
And that's why I'd like to talk about that because my understanding was I thought we were trying to make more events in the center of town. I, I know that we were working with some other events that we're doing at Lehigh. For example, we, we did expand upon two that are happening there. We have the larger-than-life party, which is centered more for teens. We are going to have the, the Bark in the Park for the dogs. We're having that there. And We Are Oglesby is having movie nights and I think they're, we're still in talks about them expanding upon the one that they already did. So there is events that's happening down there. Heck, I'd like to see a volleyball tournament done. We, one of the items I'm going to talk about coming up soon is, is the disc golf course and stuff like that. So there is, is things happening down there. But I don't know if we really want to be bringing concerts back down to Lehigh. And that's where I'd like to know.
I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, what's the purpose of the stage being there?
The stage was from, from Oglesby Days back in the day.
But if we're going to have it, we need to maintain it and we need, I had to cut out of it utilized in some, in some capacity. That's just my opinion.
You know, my understanding is it was actually, this, this might be a year or two information old, but somebody does rent that occasionally. I think somebody rented it for a wedding even less than two years ago. I don't know. I know JP's in the audience. I'm not trying to, you know, if that was accurate.
Not, not the stage, but they rented it just as shelter for it.
The shelter, okay. Okay, so it wasn't the, the stage. Yeah, so I don't know if the stage has been used for anything officially since the, the only thing I know that's officially been used for was the movie night in the park that We Are Oglesby did.
Well, we're also talking about the golf course and you just mentioned the volleyball. Well, having a stage right there would help give out trophies and prizes and everything else that would be beneficial.
I would say that the Parks Board, the head of the Parks Department, Commissioner of Public Property and fellow commissioners, the public in general, have not been in support of a stage going into Seneca Square. So I think we should put this to bed. We have many other concerns in this town and I, I think that this has been brought up plenty enough. I think the public has spoken, we have spoken, and it's time to put this one to rest.
I didn't know if that's accurate.
What's not accurate?
Do you want to poll the council? I mean, poll the council? Get a raise of hands? I mean, because otherwise we're just sitting here wasting time.
There you go, Jason.
I'm just saying that. The surveys had one-third of people were in fully support of, of Seneca Square as it was written.
Those surveys were a bit skewed.
Okay. But in overall, in general, two-thirds of them were not. But there was a, a third in there that was in, in favor of some kind of form of, of Seneca Square.
I think the public's speaking right here. 49 comments, 137. I think the list that I just read.
So I'll poll the council. What would you rather have? Are you looking that you would want to develop more in Seneca Square in the center of our, our city to where we're trying to develop downtown more? Or are you looking that you want to bring concerts and more events to Lehigh Park?
Lehigh Park.
I would say Lehigh.
I want, I want actually, I don't want a stage at Seneca, Seneca Square, but I think it's a big value to the city and I'm glad it's there. However, I'm not in favor of spending the money on a stage.
Okay, well, you know, we spend $3,000 a year just for the rentals as it is.
I understand.
We're not obligated to have a stage.
No, no, we're not.
We have concrete there. I mean, that, that's a good setup.
Yeah.
There's a couple of things down at the park that are on that stage that they could stand on. It's, it's eight inches, 10 inches high. We, we don't need the stage over there. It's just, it's a luxury that we've been afforded to be able to have lately and it's not a necessity.
So I guess that's my next question. So moving forward, because we, for example, we got two events planned this year there. Are you wanting to do the same thing where we're going to rent a, a stage for $1,500 a time for a stage to rent?
You're going to have to because you're talking about putting something in there, infrastructure, and then having to maintain it. Now, I think we've already spoke on it. I don't know why we have to keep going round and round at this point. I mean, just make your last point, say what you got to say. Let's move on to the next agenda item. I think everybody's spoken.
I'm just clarifying.
Okay, now we're, you're clarifying. Now let's, let's move on. I mean, we're just talking in circles at this point.
Okay.
You polled us even and we gave you, we gave you an answer. I mean, let's, let's move on.
I just want to verify. Okay, next item. Discuss creating market, uh, marketing or coordinating disc golf course for new regulation at Star Rock Disc Golf Course. So we actually spent a lot of the money to, to build the, the course actually came from the pill attacks. The whole idea behind that is because, again, I'm, I'm still a little skeptical. First of all, the course is beautiful. I really even liked the sign that was put in down there. It looks really nice. I like how West Black's names is, is real tight above the court, the black course and everything. It's, it's great. One of the things that we based that on was that these, these regulation-sized courses sometimes can bring thousands of people to these massive disc golf tournaments. I'd like to see if that's a possibility. So I think we should be trying to promote that and see if we can make that happen.
Are you prepared first and foremost? Are you prepared for thousands of people to come? What are your preparations?
We do it for Fun Fest.
I've been talking to a lot of people who play disc golf on a regular basis and it's my understanding that that course is not large enough to be a regulation course for a, for a sanctioned tournament.
Really?
That's what my understanding is.
I thought the whole reason we made it the size we did was to make it regulation-sized.
I've talked to some people who are diehards on the disc golf and they told me that for a, for a regulation tournament that these guys have all the time, it is not the right size. I, I don't have proof of that or anything, Jason. I'm just telling you, the guys who play it, it might, that'd be a question for Wes too.
And I will have to ask him about that because that was one of the, the big things that we talked about.
And we could have a tournament. It just wouldn't be on their circuit for whatever they play for their regulation at bringing in all these people from, from out of town.
It was my understanding that we made it specifically so it was larger. Because I asked that.
I hope I'm wrong. I really do.
Because I asked that question when they said thousands of people would come. I said, well then, how come that doesn't happen at IBCC? Why does it not happen at Bakers Lake? And I was told all those aren't regulation-sized courses. I'm like, we got this massive amount of land out there. Can we make it regular?
But they're all like part three. Aren't they, aren't most of them part three?
I haven't played the new one.
I did reach out to Wes today and he was busy with classes and everything, but he said, you were asking about the disc golf course. Things are going great out there as far as I know. Just got back into town from this last weekend. We have a couple of things planned for Star Rock Disc Golf at the Lehigh Course. If you want to mention the night, we're going to be running leagues out of there. So we'll be playing on a rotation in the area. We play in courses all over, but we'll be there on Monday nights. I just set up a Boy Scout troop that's going to be coming in from Chicago. I'm going to be showing them the course. I've done it with the Boy Scout troop before at IBCC. I'm going to move it to Lehigh. Also doing summer clinics out there with JP. He set that up for us and doing a clinic. So got a lot of things going out there. All good. So anyway, hopefully you can at least tell them that these three things are going on and there are tournaments being prepared. Hopefully we get a couple of guys that are interested in running some tournaments. I'm not necessarily the tournament-running guy, but I know a couple of other people are, so they might be interested in doing that. I'll talk to you later.
Yeah, I'm not saying you can't have tournaments there, Jason. I'm saying whatever the, the sanctioning body is for the disc golf, I don't think that course can be certified as one of their, kind of like a PGA course.
Let me find that out because I thought that was the whole purpose of it. Because we had infinite size really to make it that big.
There is a UDisc app you put on your phone and I know that there's been a lot of those people. That's how Wes can tell where they're coming from. Like he did in a couple of meetings ago where he said they're from all these different areas. So I, I don't. I don't think it hinders it anyway. I don't know what a regulation course is. I have no clues.
It is pretty sweet. So if you go out to IBCC and you run their course, they have a little box that, glad it's been years since I did it. And they have a box. You basically pull up the card and it's a scorecard. On ours, we got the nice big sign that has the map of everything. To the left, there's a little QR code that says keep your score remotely and basically you put your phone in there and it's a tracker that you wait and keep your scores go. But again, it helps track how many people are on the course as well. So I am glad to hear that. So there is, so leagues are happening and it looks like there is some smaller type tournaments going on. I think we'll have to reach out to Wes to verify that, if that information is correct. If that is, that is, I'll be honest, if that is the case, I'd, I'd be a little concerned then because my, it was my understanding that we made this system kind of regulation-sized. Okay, but hey, as long as there's activity here, that's, that's the main thing I wanted to verify. All right, new business. First item. Discuss future use of Dickinson House Bowling Alley operations and personnel. Uh, it is my understanding that we knew for over a year that the individual that's trained and qualified to, uh, I shouldn't say qualified necessarily, but, but trained to, to, to work the, uh, the bowling machines and everything down there is retiring here in about two months. And we have not done a replacement for him yet. And there's some special things that ties in with the next item too. But my question is, what is our plan going forward with the Dickinson House Bowling Alley? Because at the very last meeting, we even read a thank you letter from the, uh, from the elementary school because they use that as part of their curriculum. So I just kind of wanted to know what the plan was, if we have one.
I think I can address part of it, that I'll address both of those items. Commissioner Baldridge and I met with the Dickinson House organization to understand their desires and we had a great meeting. They were very nice. And I appreciate them welcoming us. The personnel question is a closed session matter and it's a matter of labor negotiations. So I, I really don't think that it's appropriate for us to be diving into that when the person hasn't even vacated the spot yet.
So.
That's my recommendation to the council.
So those, that item and the next item was going to be in closed session if I could do it, but I asked the attorney that. And because it's about the position itself and not the individual.
In general, as opposed to an individual, Tony, I don't think you can talk about it in closed session.
Well, that's, that's perfectly fine, but, uh, uh, keep in mind, we have labor negotiations coming up this year and that's probably going to be a matter of it too. So, I mean, we can sit here and, and talk about the position and talk about the fact that, yeah, it's important, we need to fill it and all that. But I think how we get to that point is something that should be taken up in negotiations. And, and I would say that it, it'll be addressed. It can be addressed. I don't think this is the appropriate venue to go into that right now.
I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it has anything to do with contract negotiations because that isn't for another year. That, I mean, we might start the negotiation early.
The person still hasn't vacated the spot yet.
Considering this is my department and my, my obligation to fill that position, I would like to also note that the clerk, Commissioner Stefanelle, and I have been in contact with the person we're discussing here. We have a plan. Uh, we, we have to wait for him to vacate the position. We can't just pull. I, I don't see the sense in the city paying someone for two and a half months for a trial learning period. I, I think that I am at liberty to have that assumption and I can wait a little bit longer here.
Well, I think, so here, here's my concern.
Again.
I understand it's your department and I've been working with you, trying to ask you for 10 months what the plan is, right? And now that person is going to be gone here in less than 75 days, 72 days or something like that. So when they're gone, who is going to train the person next on how to, how to do this stuff? Because I'm, I'm told these are older type machines.
You just answered yourself. You said he has 72 days left.
So are you going, I, I need to verify that you have a plan that you're going to replace this.
I said yes.
So you're going to replace this position before he leaves so that?
I'm not talking about contracts or anything, Jason. I, I believe that the Dickinson House that you're worried about will be, will be fixed. We'll have someone there to do that.
Okay, that's, that's, that's my only concern. Okay. Next one, same thing related to the position. There are, I mean, maybe you answered it already. If you're planning on having this, there, there are things this individual does. You know, my, my fear was that because you knew how this was coming for so long, that we were just going to let the, the position go away. And I, you know, I can't have that happen if there's critical things that the city needs to get done. There's things that this individual does. So again, I guess, I guess I'll ask the simple question. Do you have a plan to replace this position and the, and the special, specific things that he does?
The simple answer is yes.
Okay. Next item. Discuss potential signage at Courtyard Park recognizing Washington Oglesby Bulldog 7th grade basketball. Um, I'd like to do something sim- so one of the things the school reached out about is the signs that go on the outside of the city. That is actually done by the state and I don't think the state is going to put up signs for the runner-up necessarily. Until we get that information to verify, if they do not, I'd like to think, I think it'd be a good idea to commemorate them with, with something that, a sign that is up permanently at, uh, Courtyard Park where a basketball court's at. Peru does something similar with that on one of their concession buildings, I believe. I thought you might have had a picture.
I got no pictures.
Like you had the proof. I was like, wow, that'd be pretty cool.
Just waking up the screen, that's all.
So, um, I would like to do something similar than that, but I'd like to know kind of what the council feels about something.
It's a great idea.
Okay. Any other, other thoughts?
I, I personally think that tonight was sufficient. I don't think that we should be trying to place signs for everything when someone has a, a place at somewhere. Uh, we presented them on a plaque this evening. I think we've had a couple of different things here where we've shown our appreciation and congratulated them. Okay, park will be being redone too. So then we have to move signs and stuff. I, I, I'm not in agreement with signs at the parks.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Ready to move on.
Would you, do you, what do you, I, I think it's better to commemorate something like that because it's a unique thing that they, that they achieved. Uh, and we commemorate at the park. So it's.
I heard you.
Okay.
I'm ready to move on. I got no comments. So, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have nothing to offer you.
Well, I'm for it, but when you do something like that, how many signs are you going to put up?
I, I think anytime somebody goes to state. And if we have a relative.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't agree with that. Not every time. So no, I think they have to place. I, I think that.
I think, I think.
I think they have to place.
Let me, let me re.
I think what they did was.
They go to the state championship.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, state champ, whether it's, because.
That's a big difference.
Yeah, sorry. If they, because if they win state, my understanding is they get signs on the outside of the city placed by the state anyways. So my, my thing is you get runner-up. It's a unique thing. I, I think if you make it either runner-up or you win the state championship, I think that's more than fair that we put a sign that commemorates that. If in 20 years, we get another two or three of them that go up, I think that's a fantastic thing.
Or more.
So I got three people in favor of that. Does that mean I got a consensus then?
I would say so. If you got three people, that's a consensus.
I thought it only said to discuss it.
Okay.
Are we going to make an ordinance or something here?
I just wanted to make sure I had a consensus, right? That's what you told me about.
If you have a consensus, I'd get a bid on some kind of sign, what it wants to say, and then you can bring it back to the council. She will come up with.
Bid and back. Okay. Fair enough. Okay. Last one, and this might be a simple one. I, you know, I don't know if it's resolved, which it, maybe it is, but I, I haven't been able to confirm this or not. Discuss if any potential concerns with the field for junior senior league baseball. So as of last year, there was a concern where we were not going to be able to play both junior and senior league baseball on the same field. Uh, there were some regulation changes that happened with the mound. We were looking to get a mobile mound. I've been asking some questions, but all I heard was that the regulations changed. So has that been resolved?
I believe so. JP, would you like to speak on this? You know more than I do. I won't pretend that I do.
So last year, the board, uh, baseball board got in contact me about a potential change. Right now, um, as it stands, it's a 60-90 field plus a 60-foot mound, 90-foot bases. They were talking about going to junior league, which is 13, 14-year-olds. From the jump from Little League to that would be quite the distance. So they talked about splitting it and going to 54-80. This past winter, I believe in February, they made the, the decision, all the league presidents, to keep it to 60-90. So we will have junior league there without any changes. We still could retrofit it as well and pay for 54-80. We could do that. It, it's not a urgency at this time for that, for, for us to not lose out on any junior league games or anything like that. So right now, the field is set up for the current junior and senior league teams.
Perfect. And that's, that's basically all I needed because I've had residents and parents come to me and ask me if it's going to be a problem if we're not going to be able to host both. So that's fantastic.
We'll be good to go for that.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Those are the items. I appreciate it. I know some of those are contentious, but uh, as long as we're getting action and moving things forward. All right. Next item is public comments over any topic.
My name is Jay Chris Wilson. I wasn't planning on talking, but I just want to lend my support to the guys that are against the, um, stage at Seneca Square. Because I'll tell you what, Jason, I've spoke to you before. Streeter has a place, I've been going to musical events over in Streeter, a place called Jammin' at the Park, or Jammin' at the Clock. And it's a city-owned little park. Uh, it's a square, but I believe there's probably as much area as, uh, as, uh, as Seneca Square has. And I'll be honest with you, they draw more people than you ever draw over at Seneca Square. They do not have a stage. They just have a, I took pictures and I know I showed you. They just have a, an area that's either concrete or, or stone, you know, cobblestones or whatever, that the band sets up on. And people bring, bring lawn chairs. Very successful, very successful. I have even mentioned to you guys that, why don't you guys get a, take a road trip to some of these areas around here and see how they are successful. Streeter does it very well. Streeter does it a lot better than Oglesby does it, to be honest with you. So I'm against, I, I think to be honest with you, if you put a stage in Seneca Park, I think it's more out of ego than anything else. Like, oh hey, we got this big stage here. I, I just don't agree with it. I agree with the guys that are against it. Another thing about that stage down there, now JP, I think JP's going to have to agree with me. Because I went down there and looked at the stage, uh, when I was with We Are Oglesby prior to the, to the, um, movie night. There are two, either 10 by 10 or 12 by 12, 12 inches tall, movable.
Yes.
Platforms like a drummer can go on or think. That's what has the hole.
No, that's not true. It was on the center, center section. There was a large, large hole.
Are you sure?
It was like a burn. It was on two, two-by-six boards. Joe fixed them, didn't he, JP?
And they might be fixed. It's, it was last year when I was there.
That hole in the stage you were talking about, they cut that out years ago during Oglesby Days. They made that V in it and put it, put the drop cords down into it because when you had Stefan look up there, I'm sure they weren't stationary. I'm sure they run around.
Okay, I got you.
That makes sense.
And then they burned the edges around so it didn't cut the cord.
So was that under, well, when I went over there, I didn't see what you're talking about. So was that under? Well, when I went over there, I didn't see what you're talking about. Was that underneath one of those?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then.
I just thought a foot could. I I thought a kid getting on there and his foot falling through or something like that, it could be a hazard. I didn't realize it was put there for a purpose.
So it was dry covering it with with uh, drum risers and then that one drum riser broke. We did fix that.
Okay, so that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, I was talking about some.
Well, there was a hole in that. I did not. When I was there, that one drum riser, where it well called must have been over the hole because I didn't see any of it.
Thanks for the clarification, Jason. Appreciate it.
Jay, I appreciate your comments. I really do. Keep in mind, what my concern was, I was under the assumption that the council did want to investigate looking into a small stage there. The first thing that you mentioned, you're right. It doesn't capitalize. It's not large enough to have these big type of events that we have there. That was what I think the council was and the previous council was against the original idea of this massive thing because it's just it just can't facilitate it.
I've seen the stage you guys put up from there. I think it's a joke, to be honest. So it's too big. And plus, you don't need it. Like I said, Streeter is very successful in what they do throughout the summer at this Jamming at the Clock and they don't have no stage.
So again, the idea was to look at a small stage because we already rent one. We rent we rent one twice a year already where we spent 3,000 on it. So that's what my concern was.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other public comments over any topic?
True, man. What Jay's talking about is right. And we do have people around here like Steve Westerman. He books all the musical acts in the LaSalle. We keep booking people from out of town that nobody knows. We have got talent around here that is unbelievable. Chris Farrell, right now in Ottawa, is putting together a band and sometime this year, they're going to back up Cheap Trick. Okay, you don't need a stage over here. What he's talking about, they do the same thing in Marcell's. They have two or three acts a month and it's nice because we could do the same thing right here. Or instead of facing it this way, face this way. All the older people can come, enjoy, put their chairs up and have a good time. You don't need a stage. Probably need to burn the one down there because we don't need that anymore. And the reason why we stopped down there was all the oak trees, they were doing damage to all the roots. Ask John Pang. He'll give you a whole lot of time. He was there a long time. But what Jay's talking about, it's good. They do it there. Marcell's does the same thing. They set up on the ground. Ask, ask the musicians what they want instead of just running out. Something like this, this was well spent. But the one thing that does scare me is that. That anybody could fall down there at any time. Any insurance person comes and does an inspection and sees that open like that, he's gonna say, no, no, either keep it closed or put a window on it. It's been that way forever. So if you're going to get concerned about safety, let's fix the things that should be fixed. And and it's like we're worried about, you know, the mayor's office. You know, most of the people just go in there. I mean, if you can't walk upstairs and meet some people, then maybe you don't need to be there.
All right. Thanks. Any other comments on public comments on any topic?
I raise a motion to disball the bunker trucks in a sealed bid process.
Sir, can you speak? Can you state your name? I don't know who you are.
You want to state your name for the record?
I'm not trying to be rude.
No, just so they.
I I I honestly don't know who you are.
Eddie, I know who you are, but they don't.
Okay, I. Thank you. Pleasure to meet you.
And I I raise a motion to disball the bunker truck in sealed bid process.
Okay.
Well, that's what I have.
So we did do a sealed bid on it.
Yeah.
Months ago. Um, there was some contention about the first and the second bid. I know you were the third bidder. Um.
And I was about to say in the ad clipping that uh, any bid can be rejected and I would reject it.
So my understanding is because I, oh, Pat, did you want to talk to this at all? Did you see that piece of paper that I that we faxed over to you? Or you have no idea?
Which one?
They sent that, the the sheet that he holds in his hand. He gave it to me last Thursday or Wednesday, whatever it was.
Get a fax, I don't think, Jason.
I've been in this town a long time already and there's been many bumper truck sold sealed bid as is. It will work $6,000, $7,000. I know what they will work and people sealed bid just like we did, got it for $2,500, $3,000. And I know the guy's got it. And me, I got.
I I thought, oh, I got to apologize to Pat here. I thought Pat had, I never like to surprise you with anything. I thought you had the document. What he is claiming, correct me if I'm wrong on this, sir. What you're claiming is because in the ad, we didn't say minimum bid or we reserve the right to reject bids, that we shouldn't have been able to reject it. And I think we asked that question before and the answer was.
I think you have a a right statutorily to reject all bids, whether it's in the advertisement or not.
And I remember specifically that you you said the council for any reason can reject. We don't have to be because we had like the cost or we we have the right to reject the bids and the council did decide to reject the bids.
Sure funny out of how many people got all the trucks. Sure as hell rejected on this bid. That's what got me.
Sir, I agree with you. I I agree with you. I know for I I know for a fact, for example, there was a plow like three, four years ago that we put up and a gentleman, he's the only bid that came in for $300 and we gave it to him for 300 bucks. I know he sold it for a couple thousand the next day. I I can't help that. That was still done legally. So what you're what you're asking for, I understand. I if I could have given you the truck, I would have. But the council made a determination that they thought that that value was too low and they reserved the right to reject the bids and that's what they did. And then we put it for public auction. And my understanding is that was.
The first bid was a $5,000 bid, sealed bid. So now if that guy would have gotten that truck for that, he would have got it. Because he wouldn't have been on the board. He'd have got it.
If the if the council would have accepted that, absolutely.
If he would have gotten it. If he'd have been an outsider for that, he'd have gotten it. Like, and I'm getting rejected, so whatever.
I understand your concern, sir.
So, whatever. All right.
Hopefully, we'll hopefully it'll be, we'll have a date soon for for public auction.
Yeah.
Because the council did send it.
I want to know where I'm standing.
Moment we find out, we'll make sure we put it out at a council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Austin calling in. Uh, first thing, I just wanted to um, second kind of what Jay Chris Wilson came up parents said. Um, I don't think a stage there is necessary. We do already have one. I do believe in attracting people to the downtown, obviously in downtown development. I think that's super, super important. I think uh, whether you look at Ottawa or Galena, Illinois, I like the towns that do good have uh, strong vibrant downtowns. Um, that being said, um, I don't think a stage is necessary and then perhaps like to see something else there, especially at the stage across the street at a privately owned business. Um, I know there's some issues there with it being a privately owned business and the city, you know, favoring one business over another, but us having anything at Seneca Square anyway is going to favor businesses that are in that proximity. So um, just kind of my thoughts on that. Um, I I just, I would say uh, as far as use of that stage is concerned, maybe if we could, you know, if we had some sort of decent communication with uh, you know, our local business owners, in particular that business owner, uh, we might be able to orchestrate things um, kind of at the same time. Uh, communication is something else that I want to talk about. Um, I finished my masters, Jason. We both finished our masters at the same time uh, in May of last year. And uh, one of the things I learned uh, was to especially not only from the program, but also uh, from my coworkers uh, is to uh, never make something that should have been an email, a meeting. Uh, and so I think there were a number of things on the agenda today that were kind of discussion items uh, and really could have been sorted out uh, beforehand and really didn't need to be made into a, uh, I mean, I don't think it's a big issue that they were, but it just seems like they could have been handled uh, you know, privately. Um, and then the last thing uh, is just recently in uh, the US Supreme Court ruled in two separate cases, but they are tied to the same issue. Uh, Linkey versus or I'm sorry, Linky V. Free and O'Connor Ratcliffe, the Garnier on Friday, uh, they ruled that uh, anybody uh, who is uh, represents um, the state in official capacity uh, cannot block anybody on social media um, if they are presenting themselves presenting themselves as uh, speaking on behalf of the state. Um, and so obviously, um, I'm a civics teacher, um, and the 14th Amendment to the Constitution includes the incorporation doctrine, which incorporates the Bill of Rights to the states and by extension, local government. Um, and so um, I don't necessarily know who has who blocked, but I do know just um, in the case of my mother, at least, I know that, at least I think, uh, that you've blocked her from your uh, official mayor page. I know that.
Personal page?
Uh, no, it's not a personal page because there's a difference between a personal page and a and the government page. Yours is half and half. Uh, and so you have put campaign stuff on it, um, which is that would be personal, but you also put announcements as the mayor of Oglesby on it, which should make it a government page as well. And so it's it's really a hybrid page. And that's also the same reason, Jason, that my dad's Facebook page, which we use for both things, is archived and it's still publicly accessible because um, if it would have just been political campaign posts, uh, then it would have been personal. But once he became a commissioner, the posts that were made on there about city issues were government posts and they're a matter of public record. Uh, and so that's why the page is archived. Then it will be viewable for the foreseeable future, really forever, just because those are now public records and we can't really do anything about it. Uh, that's uh, that's what uh, that's what the mayor of Chicago, Laura Lightfoot, did. Her accounts archive. Um, different presidents archive their accounts and they're all still available for, you know, viewing. So um, if your page was strictly, if it was a political page, if it was strictly elect Jason Kern for mayor, did it present yourself um, as speaking on behalf of the city, that'd be different. But in this case, it's kind of a hybrid, so.
Well, I'll look into that if that's the case. My understanding was that the the name of the page actually changed once I was elected and it's not used as a personal page or a campaign page.
Yeah, so it's it's the content of the page.
Well, I'll look into that. I I don't believe that was the case from what because I've had a conversation or two about this with other mayors that have had some concerns that just brought it up. And my understanding, it doesn't fall from that. But I'll I will find out and I'll look into that though.
Sure. Thank you.
And I I appreciate your comments. It was, it can't be, you've talked about so many topics.
I talked about Seneca Square.
Oh, the communication.
Yeah.
I a hundred percent agree. It's something that could be done in an email and communicated. Probably shouldn't have to come to a council meeting. So take that for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comments on any topic? Barring none, number 20, Commissioner Reports.
Um, I'd like to offer my sympathy to the Daley family. I ask during this tough time for them that we keep them uh, in our prayers during their time of grieving. I have some good news for the city here. Uh, our, we had our um, insurance audit and uh, we got a uh, return on our premium of $6,819 back. So um, that's a good thing. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Thank you.
Commissioner McDermott. Okay, um, the ATV licenses and renewal, I believe we'll put them in the next newsletter when they're due. Um, I'd also like to thank everybody for their support and letters regarding the water tower and the asbestos water main. Hopefully that works to get a grant. Thank you, everybody. It's working together.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldridge.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Uh, I only have a couple of things. The first thing, oddly enough, I I do want to thank uh, two commissioners. You know, I know the this this whole debacle and stuff like that has been this this big debate and stuff like that. And I I still don't a hundred percent know if I agree that it was the the best use, but that's what the the council want, direction they wanted to go. So I do have to say that there's been two commissioners that have done an incredible amount of work, uh, personal time to do that. I know Commissioner Stefanielli has put a lot of time in with the tech aspects, making sure that the the room and it's integrated with our sound system and our camera system, put a lot of time in for that. I know Commissioner Baldridge has put a lot of time into modernizing it to make sure it was ADA accessible, soundproofing and everything like that. And it looks great. So I really appreciate that, John. Thank you. Uh, the second thing I got is, you know, Jorge's Waffles is now open. Um, they were open um, for a little bit now, but the big thing is um, we're finally starting to get a little bit of traction with some with some of our other smaller businesses here. Um, and there's even some more smaller businesses that are doing some inquiries about some other properties around town. We still haven't landed anything big yet. You know, I really want us to be able to sink our teeth into something like another another GTI or another something that's going to bring hundreds of jobs to the the city or really change how our um, uh, property taxes can be and stuff like that. So uh, good news is a lot of good small things are coming. So that's fantastic. And that's all I got. Um, next up, we have executive session for five, ILCS 120 slash two C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. There's no expected uh, action items after executive session.